All those items that are scheduled for a specific time will be taken at that time. All other items may be taken out of sequence for staff and public availability. And before we get going, I would ask Supervisor Sullivan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this land, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any new employees to be introduced? No? Okay. How about council actions out of closed session?
No report of ours.
Okay. So at this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members in order for an item to be put on the agenda. At this time, for action, it has to have arisen subsequent to the posting of the agenda and require action prior to our next meeting. Are there any such items?
Mr. Chair, I do have one item in regard to, we've been requested by Delnor County Farm Bureau to write a letter opposing the listing of the gray wolf as a threatened endangered species. The deadline's May 22nd, that's why there is an urgency for it.
Okay. Can I get a motion that's an urgency item?
Move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. It will be added as an urgency item. We'll take action later. So we'll receive reports or announcements from our fellow supervisors. And Supervisor Sullivan, let's start with you.
Yeah, it's been fairly busy last three weeks. I was a little bit out of commission for a surgery during that time, so I didn't quite attend everything that I could. But had a recent, submitted my comments regarding the Solid Waste Management Authority with R-3, and the report should be coming out at the end of the week or next week. Attended a two-by-two meeting with State and National Parks with Supervisor Hemmingson. Got a chance to meet face-to-face the new National Parks guy, Steve. Had a meeting with the president of College of the Redwoods, Kathy Smith, CAO Serena and I met with her in regards to looking at their commitment to Delnor going forward in the future, also asking about the cadaver lab that was supposed to be built with the College of the Redwoods bond money, which I understand that they are going to go forward with that now. That's the assessment you all pay on your property taxes when you get your bill. That was one of the items that was promised when the bond was passed. Had a Solid Waste Management Authority budget meeting. Had a local transportation commission meeting, and for those of you who read the paper, we've had a little bit of setback on 199. It is with the Friends, and I will put that in quotes, of Delnor filing suit in Epic and Center for Biological Diversity. And it is extremely, the suit's disingenuous, and I don't believe the group's been sincere from the beginning. They did sit on the community advisory, Mr. Souza, who speaks for the fish, sat on the community advisory team from day one. Not once did they try and kill the project. They waited until the 11th hour to actually, to submit this lawsuit. And now, the project's still going to get done. It's just going to take longer, and it's going to take a lot more money to get the project done. I mean, one of the main pieces of the project, one of the more expensive pieces, is to replacement and realignment of the bridge, which is an 89-year-old bridge. It is going to get, going to have to get replaced. So to say ironically, you know, to follow suit on, you know, the project for 199, but not to say anything about the replacement of the bridges on South Fork Road, which was far more sentiment disturbance, and I don't know if it's a coincidence, the president of Friends of Delnor has his house on South Fork Road, but it's starting to sound like it. So a really frustrating thing, a lot of inconsistencies in their suit. I don't believe that it's, I just think they picked Coho as something to go forward with. And anyway, it's costing the community, and it's going to cost the taxpayers, and cost us time, and continue to hurt the local economy. And extremely frustrating for those of us that are interested in the well-being of the community and the future of Delnor, not just individual legacies. So more to come on that. I know, I've already had a meeting with the executive director, and we are going to continue to go forward with it. The project will get done. On a lighter note, I attended the Dancing with the Stars function. I was originally supposed to be danced, but as I mentioned earlier, the surgery, I didn't fully dance. I was more of an accessory to Andre Carpenter, who actually won the dance competition. I just basically stood onstage. So a great event. Daniel Wheeler put it on. It was, it was sold out, and you know, for a really, for an event like this first time to be sold out, it's very impressive. It's for a great cause, Humane Society, and I want to congratulate Danielle on bulldogging this thing through. As you've all met Danielle at different times, if she gets a hold of something, she will get it done. So get out of the way if you're in the way. So she did a great job with it. A lot of people had fun at it, and I believe they're going to plan on doing one again next year, but I would definitely encourage all of you to participate next year on it. So other than that, headed to the California State Association of Counties Legislative Conference after the meeting today. And that's it.
Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I have had a busy couple of weeks, primarily in relationship to trying to pack up a 35-year career in a classroom of all of the stuff that I have acquired, and trying to figure out where it will all go in my garage. So that has been taking up a considerable amount of my time. But I did, I was reappointed to the RAC, even though the appointment came after the RAC meeting, but there will be follow-up meetings and monitoring of the grants that were given. The Senior Center, we had our regular meeting, and then we had a special meeting. The state has determined that the weatherization program, that the Senior Center is going to be required to pay back a considerable sum of money due to the former person that ran the program. And in fact, I had to sign the first large check back to the state yesterday. So it's very disappointing, but at least we're getting it cleared up so we can move it forward. We had an EMS meeting, which just went over the budget, and everything is pretty much the same with EMS. Redwood Coast Transit Authority met and adopted their plan of service. There was considerable discussion in relationship to making sure that we get signage and the information out about the Hauchi route, because sometimes people don't realize that we have that route, and we're working on that, and everything else is pretty much in order, and we have a balanced budget. The Redwood Park Association is up and ready and running for summer. I think there might still be a position for a person to work for Redwood Park Association this summer. And I'm on my way this afternoon to the Coastal Commission meeting, and primarily, there was an appeal filed against the Elk Valley Rancheria project for Humboldt Road, but the staff report has concur, is recommending that we find and approve the project, and that the appeal had no substance. So that's, that's a good thing for Delnor County. And I'm having a meeting with, a two-by-two meeting with the city, two-by-two, in order to talk about the possibility of looking at all of our access points to, for public access on the beach, and making sure that all of those are adequate and they're not in ill repair, because I would like to, the Coastal Conservancy contacted me, and they would like to possibly do a couple of projects in Delnor County, and I thought that that would be one that would be good, to make sure that all of our access points are in good repair, and encourage people to go to the beach and have public access. And that they're also looking at the possibility of partnering, of doing a partnership with the endowment, of trying to hook up some additional trails with the Conservancy's support to encourage children to get out and about. And so that, that's encouraging when they, when they call us. That means that we should be on our toes, getting ready for some proposals. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
If I could add, who appealed to the coastal, that Humboldt project?
It was appealed by two commissioner appeals, Stone and Sanchez, and also Friends of Delnor.
I'm not surprised to hear that. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. I had a Sustainable Forest Action Coalition meeting in Sacramento. It's a great opportunity to meet with a couple of congressmen and their staff, as well as some state senator, or some U.S. Senator staff. But most of the discussion was over the salvage operations, salvage logging of the rim fire, which the Forest Service is going to take about a year to get through that process, which they think is lightning fast. And by the time they get to it, the value of the salvage timber will be virtually worthless. But they're very proud of themselves for making this move so quickly. Had an ORTEC meeting in Chico. Had a teleconference with our advocate in Washington, D.C., Greg Burns, on some Forest Service issues. Supervisor Sullivan said, we had a two-by-two with State and National Parks. And they're, they're working on a project in Hauchi, a trail project, which looks like it's going to happen, and some expansion of some campgrounds. They also mentioned Last Chance Grade, which they're trying to be very proactive in getting a route that is acceptable to them, and possibly Caltrans. And so they're trying to work very closely with them, so hopefully we'll see something come out of that. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority staff meeting. Had a local area formation commission meeting. Most of the conversation was over the special district for the fairgrounds. I had a local agricultural meeting with mostly lily bowl grower issues, and that seems to be going very well. So they've had some testing done, and everything looks like that's going very well. Celebrating the Week of the Young Child, had a tour of the Pine Grove Head Start and State Preschools. Patty Vernelson, along with Tina Suterus and Dorian Wells, Brooke Davis, went through those preschools. It was pretty interesting. They do a pretty nice job. Had discussion with staff on the travel management plan. We've had several, several meetings working on that. Had a two-by-two with the Smith River Rancheria, where CAO Jay Serena presented basically our budget and how, where our money comes from, where we spend our money. So they have an idea of how our operation works. You did a great job, and gave them the presentation. They're going to look over and get back to us. Had a, as Supervisor Sullivan mentioned, I'm not going to go into it any farther, had a local transportation commission meeting about 197, 199. That whole project is halted. Probably said enough on that. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. Went to a little chamber mixer for Bob Black and Martha Rice, their new offices down at the McNulty House. And then had a meeting at the Grange about the travel management and restoration project. Christie Prescott and Brenda Devlin from the Forest Service gave a little presentation, and then tried to answer some questions. There's a lot of inaccuracies from the document to the map and vice versa. So, you know, their basic response was to include that in your comments, which we're going to try to do. Matter of fact, on the agenda, there's a request to extend the comment period out an extra 30 days, so that we can go through this very lengthy document and try to find all the mistakes that were made. That's going to be difficult. Had an opportunity to meet with Amia Miller, who came from the city in Japan, and I can't speak Japanese, so I'm not going to try to attempt to say the name of the city. But this, when the boat that came over, and the kids cleaned it up and sent it back, and then the kids went over to Japan, and had a very nice visit in Japan. The, Amia wants to form a relationship or form a bond between our community and that community. They said they're very similar geographically, and it's going to be very interesting. I also had a nice Mother's Day, had family and friends, and that was about it for me.
Supervisor Gettle.
Yes, thank you. Busy couple of weeks also. Actually, I was not able to be in attendance at the April 22nd meeting, but immediately following that, that Thursday, the 24th, I attended our Delnor County Republican Chamber Mixer, which was attended by quite a few people, very successful. And also attended the following week after that, the Rice Black Law Firm Chamber Mixer. All were good events. Friday, I attended, a couple of Fridays ago, I attended our monthly Delnor County Crescent City Chamber of Commerce meeting, where a discussion is underway to name our new grand marshal for the July 4th parade. Saturday, at the fairgrounds, I helped present the Solid Waste Management Green Awards to a number of very worthy recipients. Last Monday, I met with representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers and delivered, who delivered news that the memorandum of understanding between the county and the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the Crescent City jetty has been approved on the Army Corps of Engineers side, and we'll bring it back to our county council for further review. Very much needed repairs need to be done, so our county search and rescue team can effectuate rescue efforts on the jetty, and hopefully, that will be resolved in a short period of time, and we can make those repairs. Last week, I met with Assembly candidate Matt Heath at the Republican Women Federated Luncheon, and I offered my endorsement of his candidacy. That evening, I met with interested parties, including North Coast Cliffhangers, as Supervisor Hemmingson just mentioned, to discuss the proposed roads closure with the U.S. Forest Service. I won't go over too much more, because Supervisor Hemmingson has mentioned that. There are some inconsistencies in the proposal, one of the proposals which we're looking at, proposal number six, regarding the proposed map and what actually ends up on the map, where they don't align properly. Legends are incorrect. The color codes are wrong. So later on in this meeting, we'll ask for an additional 30-day extension, so we can have those errors clarified, fixed, and corrected, and we can move forward. Last Friday, I was privileged to attend the Rural Human Services Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon at the Rowdy Creek Park. Special thanks to Mike Costigan and Ron Phillips of RHS, and Kevin Hartwig, for helping honor almost 30 volunteers who've donated time and effort to make life a lot easier for those served by human services, Rural Human Services. Following that, I participated in the white walk bike to school at Best Maxwell School. This is part of the Safe Routes for School to make awareness of pedestrian safety, especially for our children, and also encourages physical activity for our children. Last Thursday, the Delnor Solid Waste Management Authority met to discuss its budget meeting. Many questions remain unanswered, and the authority did not go ahead and approve that budget as yet. We'll take that up at the upcoming May 21st Solid Waste Meeting, and then hopefully move it on to the Crescent City Chamber, the Crescent City Council and the Board of Supervisors. Also, attended the Redwood Coast Transit Authority. We discussed the service to and from Hauchi, and possibly changing that. At this time, no action was taken. And this past Friday, again, as Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, I participated in the recognition of the Young Child Week, which is May 5th to 9th, accompanied by Dorian Wells and Patty Vernelson, a first five. I observed the four-square program, preschool program, and was quite impressed with what I saw. And finally, and I underscore this as kind of an important event this past week, members of the clergy approached me, and from the Pastor Fellowship, it's a group of clergymen representing all faiths in Delnor County, to discuss the recent Supreme Court decision affirming prayer before government meaning and remaining as constitutional. Well, after the discussion, the Pastor Fellowship is requesting, through me, that the Delnor County Board of Supervisors consider conducting a brief non-denominational prayer prior to its pledge of allegiance. I said I would pass this on to our board and ask the chair to place it on the agenda to, for board consideration, for a brief prayer offering guidance, wisdom, and understanding as the Board of Supervisors governs Delnor County. And that's our week.
Thank you. It's been a year and a half, Roger. I wish you would work on the communication with the chair on something like that. Okay, I too had some meetings. Started out with a meeting with the governor regarding the budget, since there's millions of dollars supposedly showing up that we didn't, that he wasn't counting on. CSAC, on behalf of the counties, asked for more mental health dollars. We asked for some additional, an extra year of additional AB 109 realignment dollars. And we asked that the commitment to pay back the counties for the hundreds of millions of dollars that the state had borrowed several years ago, which is scheduled to begin payback next year and the year after, to actually escalate that and start a year early, rather than in an effort to pay down the debt. We will hear back from Michael Cohen in the Department of Finance tomorrow regarding that, and I understand paying back the counties is still on the table. Had a couple of agenda reviews, met with the CSAC Revenue and Asset Management regarding what we are doing to try to maintain some sort of a cash flow, so we don't have to lean on the counties to subsidize or to pay for membership in CSAC. Had a couple of meetings with the Officers of CSAC, which is the State Association, as well as State Association of Counties Executive Board. Then I had a meeting with their finance corporation. I've been put on the board of the State Association of Counties Finance Corporation, which runs programs to raise revenue for CSAC, but also runs programs that benefit the county. Must like the prescription programs that we have. They had a meeting with Community Development Department regarding some constituents and some planning. Our Community Development Department is excellent, especially going forward with communication. Had another meeting with the Finance Corporation, as well as the Cal Trust Board, which runs probably a million dollars worth of assets, $1.3 million worth of assets to CSAC. Participated again in some finance, excuse me, some officers' calls. Had several calls regarding disposition of revenues and strategies of some of the properties that CSAC has. Attended a mini-summit in Tahama County, which gave the opportunity of some of the people that, some of the corporations, some of the companies that run the programs that benefit our counties, and both with programs and revenues, to have access to the supervisors to better explain what their programs are and how they can help counties. Met with mental health, met with county council regarding tri-agency. Again, more agenda reviews. I also participated in Year of the Young Child. Went to Elk Valley Head Start, and spent some time with the kids, and read a couple of books to them. Can't get away with just reading one book, which is, you know, and that really was probably out of the past couple of weeks was a highlight. It's just really excellent. Then I had a meeting with the RDA Successor Board, which is the Redevelopment Agency successor, on how to distribute those funds. I had, again, another meeting with Community Development. Had a meeting with the Airport JPA, which went along very well. Met with Supervisor Hemmingson and Mia, I guess how we pronounce the name, from Japan. And just, you're going to hear more about this in the future. I think the school's going to be asked to take the lead in form of a sister community, not sister county, not sister city. And the uncanny, I guess, similarity, or the eerie similarities between that community that was wiped out by the tsunami, which housed the boat that ended up here that was taken back. So we're going to follow up on that. And then I want to mention that CAPSI, the Child Abuse Prevention Council, the great job that they did during this last month, including all their partners, CSAC and Social Services and all of them. Special recognition to the flags that were flown. The county flew four of them, the city flew two of them. The school district, they had either three or four of them. One was at the fairgrounds, and then there was a new flagpole installed at the Family Resource Center. So everybody that was responsible for that needs to be congratulated, and I encourage to continue those efforts. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask the CAO to make a report.
Over the last two and a half, three weeks, we've been working on the requested budget that has been submitted now by all the departments, and we've been having meetings, and we'll continue those through the rest of this week and into next week, until we can then sit down again for a second round of meetings with those that have the biggest issues. We've had contract negotiations with the Iroquois Tribe, Sheriff Employees Association, and our miscellaneous bargaining unit, SEIU. Happy to say that we should be bringing something forward for the SEIU agreement that completes it. We've been working on one item. Contract negotiations over nursing and doctors for the jail, juvenile hall, and baro, and also with public defenders. All of those agreements come up in the next few months. Kind of similar to the report of the meeting with Hamaya regarding the earthquake in Japan and the tsunami. There's going to be an EOC activation and training tomorrow. It's full-scale, it's all day, so there, you may get calls from me, and it depends on the injects that come in, but part of that training is to keep the Board of Supervisors in the loop regarding what is happening. It is a near-shore event training, which means there's a perceived or a planned destruction of a considerable amount of the area. So as it was explained to us from the representative from Japan, we are eerily similar, and they had a considerable destruction, and we can expect that here, which we already knew, but it's, there's a dose of reality when you see the reports that they have. We met with Smith River Rancheria in the two-by-two, and as mentioned, gave a presentation regarding funding for the county budget and accounting responsibilities of all the different departments. Had a meeting with the SBDC Board and a couple of the Council of Economic Advisor representatives, primarily just to get an idea of what SBDC does, and how people can reach out to them as business owners or prospective business owners. Reviewed the Forest Service Travel Management Draft, DIR. It's well over 600 pages, not including the maps. And met with Supervisor Hemmingson and CDD for the response. And today, the May revision came out, since we've been in meetings. So one item that I've already been alerted to is that the discussion regarding pilt on the, at the state level, is not going forward at this point, based on the legal action taken by Glen County. And the governor was clear that because there is legal action, he's not going to address it, and he doesn't, at this point, they don't believe that it's owed to the county. With that nice note, that'll be the end of the report.
Way to end it. Well, we will be discussing that further when we're in Sacramento. At this time, I'm going to briefly take the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Chair, I'd like to pull for discussion item number nine on the consent agenda.
Okay. Do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to pull it for lengthy discussion?
No, I'd just like a little more information. I'm hoping Mr. Blatton could come up and explain a little bit about what's going on since July 2013 on this HIV/AIDS surveillance program, what's going on with it. I appreciate a little update.
Okay. Why don't we do that now, then?
Sure. Thank you. This is the three-year agreement, and as you know, we've dealt with this before, that during the agreement, the amounts will change to some extent, and it does take the state a long time to get around to providing the right information for us to actually have an agreement. So the services have been continuing all along, and they will continue. Unfortunately, it just takes this long, and you may see other changes between now and the end of the three-year agreement.
I wasn't too concerned about the effectuation date. That's $3,600 a year. We're a year into it. Just, could you just, for the benefit of people watching on television, could you just explain how the surveillance program works, so everyone is up to date on it?
Well, essentially, if there are any cases, those, that information is provided to public health, and public health tracks that information and provides it to the state and federal government in terms of the incidence of HIV or AIDS. And we also provide assistance for those individuals in getting the proper health care that they might need.
Can you, is it serving a growing population here in Delnor County?
Fortunately, not.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding that issue?
Moved to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to prove the consent. It's been moved and seconded to prove the consent agenda. Any public comment on any item that's on the consent agenda? Back to the board, any other comments? Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Sheriff Finnegan?
Yes. Part of the consent agenda is there were two proclamations, and I'm going to, I know we have public comment at 10:25, I'm going to go ahead and-
I'm sorry, was that part of the consent agenda? I thought we were just voting on item nine.
No.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm going to have to, I have to re-keze myself on item three, so we'll have to redo the vote on that. I apologize.
Pull the vote, please.
Well, I made the motion, though, on the consent agenda.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Sheriff Finnegan?
Yes. And we have proclamation item number seven off the-
I'll say yes minus number three, that I have a conflict of interest on.
You got it right that time?
Yeah.
Good.
I got it right, okay.
Okay, number seven was proclamation foster care, foster parent appreciation during foster care month, month of May 2014. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you. Before I read the proclamation, I want to also personally thank foster parents, because over the years, working with children in Del Norte County, I have seen unsung heroes, that it, it's just amazing, the amount of energy they give to the children that they open their homes to, and the incredible amount of work that they have to do to be a foster parent. So there, I truly am honored to be able to read this proclamation. It's the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors, State of California, proclamation of foster parent appreciation during National Foster Care Month of May 2014. Whereas the family services serves as a primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support, and is the very foundation of our communities and our country, and whereas Del Norte County, there are 72 children and youth in foster care who deserve the best opportunities that can be provided, as well as a safe, secure, and stable home possessing both compassion and nurturing in the foster family. Whereas all children and youth in foster care need a positive, meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their lives. And whereas dedicated foster families help fulfill a vital role by providing guidance, stability, and love, which helps children and families heal and reconnect, resulting in the launch of a young person into successful adulthood. And whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a continuous greater need for more foster families. And whereas there are countless individuals, public and private organizations, and often unsung heroes, who work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in and living in foster care. And whereas, as well as the enduring and valuable contribution of foster parents, kinship, adoptive homes, and foster care system is only as good as those who choose to be part of it. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim foster parent appreciation during foster care month in Del Norte County, and urge all citizens to join in helping to change the lifetime, the lifetime of a child or youth in foster care by volunteering their talents and energies on behalf of children in foster care, foster parents, and the Child Welfare and all other committed professional staff who work with them this month and throughout the year, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Del Norte, on this 13th day of May 2014.
Somebody here to receive that?
Yes, Susan Wilson from Child Welfare Services to accept the proclamation on behalf of the foster parents, and she wants to say a few words.
Well, there are thousands of children in foster care that require temporary out-of-home care because of parental neglect, abuse, abandonment, or exploitation. Some children stay in foster care for a day, a week, a month, or longer. The children are of all ages and varying needs. Foster parents come from all walks of life. They could be a relative, a friend of the family, or simply a member of the community who is willing to open their home to a child and make a difference in a child's life. Foster parents provide a supportive and stable family for children who are unable to live with their birth parents until family problems are resolved. Foster parents work with Child Welfare Services and probation staff to reunite a child with birth parents. Foster parents provide a needed and necessary service to our community. Often, foster parents will put their lives on hold to meet the needs of some of the most vulnerable members of our community. They are the foundation, the building blocks for Child Welfare Services. If it was not for the help and the support of our foster parents, that our foster parents provide, we at Child Welfare Services would not be able to do our job. It's with deep appreciation and gratitude that I accept this proclamation on behalf of all of our hard-working and dedicated foster parents. Thank you.
Also, we also have a 30-second video that our Coastal Connections Youth and Young Adults put together to help recruit foster parents. And so if you wouldn't mind, we'd like to show you that 30-second video.
Go ahead.
It just takes five minutes to load, right?
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
The Del Norte County Sheriff's Office has long had a program that is required and necessary and needed for foster parents, and they have been a supporting and helpful end to that, and that is the Drug Endangered Children Program. When we go to these homes where drugs are found and these children are found inside the homes, the process is we test these children, and oftentimes, over 60% of the time, these children show positive for the effects of the drugs in their systems. They're also placed in danger because oftentimes, the drugs and the access to the drugs are directly available to them. And so we have worked hand-in-hand with Social Services in protecting and removing these children from those dangerous environments. But those programs could not work without foster care. The demand and the need for foster care is critical, and I want to thank and appreciate the foster parents that have stepped forward to allow this to happen, because without them, these children may be placed more at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. There was one other proclamation in the consent agenda, and that was item number nine. Oh, excuse me, it was not, it was number eight. Proclamation declaring May 2014 is Mental Health Month, and I would ask Supervisor Gitlin to read that proclamation, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Sheriff Finnegan. And it's as follows. This is a proclamation of Mental Health Month, May of 2014. Whereas mental health is essential to the overall health of Del Norte County, resulting in productive activities, fulfilling relationships, and the ability to adapt, change, and cope with adversity. And one in four American adults are affected by mental illness, and one of our local mental health board, excuse me, and our local mental health board and others emphasize the importance of providing mental health and the early identification of mental health illness. And whereas mental health problems do not discriminate, they affect people regardless of race, creed, age, lifestyle, or economic status. And mental health recovery is possible with proper treatment and support, empowering mental health consumers to lead full and productive lives. And the County of Dornout, Dornout, Del Norte, excuse me, has made a commitment to community-based systems of mental health care in which all residents can receive high-quality and consumer-centered services, and take pride in its history in upholding the dignity and civil rights of all of its people, including those coping with mental illness. Whereas, as many as 8 million Americans who have serious mental illnesses do not receive adequate treatment each year, and people who have untreated mental health issues use more general health services than those who receive mental health services when they need them. And whereas, mental health should not be shrouded in stigma and discrimination in causing those who are affected to not seek care, with suicide being the third-leading cause of death of young people in the County of Del Norte observes Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health. And whereas, we recommend or commend the Department of Health and Human Services Mental Health Branch, our local mental health board, and the community partner organizations provide private, faith-based, or government and individuals and family members for their outstanding work improving the quality of life for mentally disabled individuals in our community. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Supervisors, the County of Del Norte, that May 2014 is hereby proclaimed as Mental Health Month throughout Del Norte County and upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools, to recommit our community to increase awareness and understanding of mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all the people with mental illness. And I should give this to someone here to receive this? Thank you.
We're asking Clark Moore to accept the proclamation, who's been a longtime local mental health board member.
I will be very brief, thank you very much. I have been on the Mental Health Board since 1991. My first involvement with it was in 1976, when I was in nursing school here. Let me just say, we've come a tremendous distance, and we have clients here that have been well-served by this and have served us well as well. So, thank you very much.
I think we might have a consumer or two that might want to come and say a few words, if that's okay?
Sure, sure.
Hello, my name is Richard Day. I'm recovering from mental illness, and I can say that I could not be here today. Going for the efforts of Leanne, or, let's see, I'm sorry, or other names I can't even think of right now. It's, my life has changed dramatically. I'm a NIF person. Ignore the fact that I'm a bit nervous of speaking for you folks here today, but still, recovery is possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need service center to stay open because I need it for my functioning in my life.
Thank you very much. So on behalf of the board, I want to-
No? Sutter Coast Hospital has been paying for those radio ads, I don't know if you've heard them yet, talking about Mental Health Month, and in particular, about looking for the signs of a loved one or a friend that may have signs of suicide, and how to reach out and support that person. So we really wanted to acknowledge Sutter Coast for paying for those ads.
Thank you. So on behalf of the board, I would like to thank all the staff and volunteers that help in the mental health advocacy and efforts. Thank you for the green ribbons, and I love the T-shirts. Wish we all got one of those, too. But I'd have to report it as a gift, so what the heck. And with that, we're going to go to public comment period. Any member of the public can speak to this board on any matter that is under the purview of this board. If it's not, take it to the board that it is. Clark taught me that when he was a supervisor. If it is something that is on the agenda, I might ask you to hold your comments until that item on the agenda is brought up. Public comment. Who's first? Anybody?
What's our list?
I think I'm first on the list.
Go ahead.
Chuck Tweed. Mr. Tweed?
Well, Chuck Tweed, 1300 Ferndale Lane. I applaud the mental health issue that's going on here today. However, next week, I'm exporting one of my children to the Bedford area because he couldn't get a living wage job in Del Norte County. And by the way, we spent like $150,000 to educate him. He graduated from University of Southern Oregon with honors. So maybe we need to pay these folks more money and attract more. And anyway, that's my point there. My other point, I've got a real heavy heart. As a taxpayer of Del Norte County, I was exercising my 640 permit in front of an environment downtown that has invited us to set up our shop there. And I was very rudely and viciously attacked by a member of the board. And I don't feel that, as a taxpayer that has a 640 permit, that I should be-
Chuck, what, 640 permit, what are you talking?
Where I can, I can put forth an agenda in public. And I don't feel that, that was deserved. I don't feel that was in her right to do that. I don't believe that a supervisor should act that irresponsible in public when I was dealing with somebody who was interested in what the 640 permit was all about. And I would ask that quite possibly you investigate that, and maybe censure that individual, and say that it's not okay to attack a taxpayer of the County of Del Norte. I was really upset about that. I had to think about it a while, and I had to bring it to the board. And I would ask that some action be taken about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Sue White.
Hi, Susan White, back, visiting. I want to first come forward with two things. Last year, I came to your board, and I asked Mr. Gitlin, and he gave it quite an approval of the idea of random testing and drugging of your county employees. That means it does not go past, it goes past all the employees. That means all of you, the board members, everyone, should be randomly tested. And I, it just must have fallen on dead ears, because I have not heard or anything, seen anything in the budget for, since June 14th on this. Now, my second thing, briefly, I will go as fast as I can. June 16th of last year, I came forward, like all of you have different jobs within the community, I came forth to Mr. Finnegan on the, some people were interested in buying my home, and they came to him-
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. If this is a matter that's under the purview of the board, continue. If it's not, pick on something else.
No, it's not that. It's not that. I reported to you personally that I, my daughter and myself were fondled by, a man fondled himself out there at the animal shelter. I came forth, and David took quite stride to try to help us through this, I would say, devastating time. I went to the sheriff's office, we made a report, and it fell on dead ears to our acting district attorney, because I had issues with her. It now is over to the Attorney General's office, not because Sheriff Wilson sent it in, because Sheriff Wilson, it fell on dead ears. So I'm coming forth with you right now, that I was very unpleased to know that you folks gave him his retirement after three other women came forward. One of them came to you folks and even testified to you folks that he had acted improperly in front of her. And then you guys gave him a royal handshake, gave him his retirement and all his vacation time- time without putting him on administrative leave. I'm very upset with it, so I think the best thing to do is for all of you accountable for it, because I'm sorry, I am going down to the, I'm going down to go speak to the legislator and see what we can do about this. Because if that's the way the corruption is up here, that men get handshakes, I've seen people, county employees, get back to their job. Thank you very much.
Okay. Susan, I can tell you that this board did take a look at it, we reviewed your written complaint, and if you would like to find out how it was handled, I'd urge you to talk with the CAO regarding the disposition of your case. Next, please.
Aaron Funk.
Aaron Funk from Plano, California. I'd like to follow up on Chuck Tweed's remarks. The gentleman behind me in one of these shirts, Joe Lavender, was also there and described that incident, and I've talked to two eyewitnesses, and not only was there a very, very vocal, energetic opposition displayed, argumentation, but apparently in a request to the manager of Safeway to have us thrown, or have them thrown out of the parking lot. That's a violation of the First Amendment, certainly, and also the Fourth Amendment. Beyond that, you folks as a body have voted to place upon the ballot, June 3rd, the major A. And that's an advisory to you about the feelings of the members of this community about whether or not you should go forward with the declaration of the state of Jefferson. As I understood that, that was you seeking the community's input. Yet Supervisor McClure has been active in trying to turn that, trying to sway that. Her name appears on the ballot opposition statement, and on the rebuttal. She went before the city council to have them vote against major A, and she's appeared on a number of occasions trying to sway the public's opinion that she's supposed to, as I understand you all are, you're supposed to be listening to and acting upon. I think that's totally out of place, and I don't know what sort of action should be taken, or is appropriate to be taken, but it's not something that a recipient of the community feelings should be out there trying to mold that community feeling.
Thank you. Next, please.
Elle Sutter. Hi, Linda Sutter, 5th District. Okay, first off, you know, everybody has a political opinion, and they're my own, when I have a political opinion, it's my own, and I don't expect anyone to place any value on it, so, I was very disturbed to find out yesterday when a deputy sheriff told me that Dean Wilson refused to accept a general informational report regarding corporate fraud of Walmart from me because, quote-unquote, "he does not like me." Now, I don't care if he likes me or not, I'm a taxpayer. And does that mean I'm not going to have police protection because you don't like me? And then we wonder why nobody wants to come up here when they hear this kind of stuff. This is outrageous. I implore people, do not vote for Wilson, we can't handle another administration by him. He's not protecting the people. I'm not a criminal, I'm a retired correctional officer. I pay my taxes, I pay my bills, and I try to keep my house looking really nice. I mean, I try to do just about everything, of course, I've had ticket violations for speeding every once in a while or something, but, you know, I'm not a criminal here. And we need to clean up our act around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Anybody else in the public wish to comment? All right. Then we have a couple of other timed items, and we'll try to get us back on track here. We had a 10:30 American Red Cross presentation, as requested by the executive director of the American Red Cross. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. And thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today.
I'm going to let you introduce yourself, too.
I'm going to right now.
Good.
My name is Barbara Caldwell, and I'm the executive director of the Humboldt-Del Norte chapter of the American Red Cross. I'm going to talk a little bit about the fact that it is Humboldt-Del Norte chapter, but I want to let you know that I was the executive director of the Humboldt County chapter for the past 10 years. So I wanted to present this to you today to let you know that, oh, I just got nervous. Whoa. It was interesting, to let you know about us and a little bit about the Red Cross itself, in case you didn't know. Because I think it's important, how does this work? Is this the right click? Left? There we go. I think in terms of the Red Cross, it's just, I want to give you...
That we can't staff with the disaster volunteers in Del Norte, then we bring someone up from Humboldt County. And that works. And one of the reasons it works is because we, in Humboldt County, have always had Southern Humboldt, which is just about as far away from Eureka as Del Norte is. We want to increase our board membership, and I wanted to introduce Mary Dorman. She is a member of the Board of Directors, and she's a Crescent City businesswoman. And she has very, I'm very happy to say, she has been helping us through this. Of course, increase the support in the community, which shows national, shows the rest of the nation, that our community needs the Red Cross. We're also trying to, we're continuing in our preparedness efforts. And as such, we have a After an earthquake happens, find out what the plan is and make sure you educate your child. Be educated about your risks, be educated about the opportunities. An opportunity would be to have a neighbor on the child's emergency card so that that neighbor can go pick that student up if you're not able to get close to them. We need to plan and to practice. Everyone here, I hope, probably knows to drop, cover, and hold when an earthquake happens. You need to know what to do immediately afterward. For instance, the first thing is to check and see if everyone's all right. And then long-term resilience. And that's a lot of what we're doing in the planning for the community. And then finally gathering resources at home and at work and in the car. I have this fantasy that every car in Del Norte County would have a disaster pack in it. That's a goal. It's practically unreachable, but it is something that I look at every day, and I would love that idea. But we can certainly keep trying one step at a time to help prepare people. I wanted to let you know, because it's a Humboldt-Del Norte County chapter, that we are still here. That just because there's not two standalone chapters anymore, it doesn't mean that we're not strongly in Del Norte County, that we won't continue, and we do continue with our emergency response, both single-family fires and mission-related in terms of the larger disasters. That we are continuing to focus on disaster preparedness and training up here. And we have someone here at least two days a week doing training for the schools more than, usually it's for the schools, but we also offer free disaster preparedness training for any business organization that wants it. They just need to give us a call, and we'll be up to create it. And then we're doing, we are focusing a lot on partnerships and collaborations. And we really feel like we've, we know that we have helped to build that collaboration and partnership, especially with your very vibrant emergency management community. And I must say, what happened in the tsunami week was, I was so proud to be part of that in the little way that I am, so proud. It was a very good, very good effort, very, pretty amazing. We all know ultimately that it's these guys that are counting us, counting on us, both to be prepared and know what to do in a disaster, but also what the preparedness does is helps us be resilient as a community so that Del Norte County can bounce back again. And you, as the supervisors, the county supervisors, are in the forefront of that. You will be good role models of that. And I also want to let you know that we're here to partner with you in any way, shape, or form. I have given you all my business card. Please feel free to call that cell phone if you have any questions. We are out and about a lot. A lot of times you won't get us when you call the office, but you will get us by cellphone. We also have a very, a dedicated 800 number that all emergency response calls can go to, and a very strong system so that we make sure that we respond to all calls. So that's it in a nutshell. There's a lot more I could tell you, but I wanted to leave this open for questions and to thank you once again for this opportunity.
Questions from board members?
You know, Barbara, we met about a month ago, is it?
Yes.
We met at the restaurant, and I was, I too had thought, well, what's going to happen with the local chapter? You know, the Red Cross is, is an organization you don't hear much about until the need is there, and then it's 24/7. So I want to commend you for your great work. We've offered our offices anything we can do to help you move along and get involved with the good that you're doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Other comments, questions? Thank you. On behalf of the board, as one of the great partners in the community.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Have a great day.
With that, we're going to have our, another timed item, running a little late, Del Norte Ambulance Presentation Regarding the Role of EMS in Del Norte County. Before we do that, I'd like to take action on a proclamation regarding declaring EMS Week as May 18th through 24th. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Move and second it. Public comment. Further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously that May 18th through 24th will be Emergency Medical Services Week. And with that, General Manager? Well, first, I'm going to let Supervisor Hemmingson read the proclamation and steal some of your thunder. I know you're not used to that, John.
This is a proclamation of Board of Supervisors, County of Del Norte, State of California, designating the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services team consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifestyle skills, life-saving skills, excuse me. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, therefore be it proclaimed, the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors and recognition of this event do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourages the community and medical services, service organizations to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Pass and adopt to this 13th day of May, 2014.
I accept this on behalf of everybody involved in EMS in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm John Pritchett, General Manager of Del Norte Ambulance. My original plan was to provide a bit of history and a full presentation regarding EMS in Del Norte County, but unfortunately I was called out of town for a week because of, because of a death in the family, and that kind of derailed my plans. However, I do want to make a brief report regarding the status of EMS in Del Norte County in light of May 18th through 24th being National EMS Week. It is our belief that despite the well-documented debate involving the future of sort of host hospitals direction, the emergency medical system in our community remains a model that other small rural counties would do well to follow. It all starts with the 911 operators in the Del Norte Sheriff's Office who work long, stressful hours. Emergency responders in Gasky, Hayuchi, Smith River, Fort Dick, Klamath, and Crescent City respond night and day regardless of the weather or road conditions. Volunteer firefighters and other first responders deal with a gauntlet of emergency calls ranging from somebody with flu-like symptoms in a living room to the severely injured in a motor vehicle accident. These first responders put themselves at risk to help others in critical situations. Del Norte Ambulance continues to provide a paramedic level of service to those in need and has recently expanded its already active training and quality improvement programs. We've also reestablished the Explorer Program, and this month, two new ambulances, fully ALS-equipped, are joining the Del Norte Ambulance fleet. The personnel in Center Coast Hospital's Emergency Department deals with not only those, not only those patients that we bring to their doorstep, but those coming in off the street, some in need of critical emergency care and some in need of nothing more than simple human interaction. Those in need of higher levels of care are flown out by Cal Air Lifeline and other air ambulance services to other medical facilities in our region. Tying into this EMS program is a cornucopia of trainings, much of it coordinated by Del Norte County's Emergency Services Manager Cindy Henderson. And there are many other organizations, local law enforcement, tribal officials, search and rescue, mental health, state and federal agencies, all of whom respond when needed. Together, this diverse team of individuals and organizations react quickly and react efficiently, giving residents a peace of mind that, quite frankly, other communities only wish they could provide. Now I'd like to take a few seconds and share with you a success story. Holly Sharp is here today. She's a single mom, started at Del Norte Ambulance as an EMT-1, and after several years, she decided to take the next step in her career to become a paramedic. Del Norte Ambulance helped her in her goal, arranging her work schedule to meet the time demands of attending paramedic classes in Humboldt County. Now please note, we're talking more, we're talking about more than 1,000 hours of classroom time plus countless hours in the field. In the next few months, Holly will become a full-fledged paramedic with Del Norte Ambulance, and we are very proud of her, her hard work and her dedication, and she has a couple words she'd like to share. She's the pretty one coming to the
Hello. So I'm Holly, and just wanted to thank the crew and Del Norte Ambulance for letting me achieve my goals. It's been a long run, and I look forward to serving the community as a paramedic, and I am very excited about it, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Also, also this fall, two other Del Norte Ambulance employees, Chaz Davis and Matt Sutton, local young men, will begin, will begin paramedic school as well. Del Norte Ambulance will be supporting them as we try to grow our own ALS-level crew members. So in conclusion, the many agencies that provide emergency medical services to Del Norte County are like a family. And sometimes we have our disagreements, but we are united in a single goal: to make sure our loved ones, our neighbors, our friends, and our visitors are taken care of in their time of need to the very best of their ability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great presentation. Being in election year, I thought maybe you were running for office. Never mind. All right. Thank you very much to all those that are community partners and help keep this a safe, very safe community for our children, our families. So with that, we are going to go ahead and take regular items. I'm going to start with the budget transfers. Can I get a motion grouping the budget transfers, if you so please?
Move to approve budget transfers?
Probably need to be a little more specific.
I'm getting back to the beginning of the
Okay, there's been a motion, can I get to approve budget transfers '04, '07, '02, '04, '03, '05, '06, '01, '08, and '09? That's budget transfers '04, '01 through '09. Actually, there, and then '05, '01, '02, and '03 items on the agenda.
10 through 21.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on these items? Any board comments on these items? Poll of vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McQuar?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes, so anybody that picks up one of these and sees the astronomical amount of money that we just transferred, it was money already allocated, and this is what happens at the end of the budget process, budget year. Item number 25 is a request. The Board of Supervisors support AB 2231, which is to reinstate the senior citizens and disabled citizens' property tax postponement program. Go on.
Before you this morning to ask for your letter of support on behalf of the California Associations of County Treasurers and Tax Collectors. We have been successful in moving a proposal to reinstate the senior citizen and disabled tax postponement program. I don't know if you're familiar with that program, but it was in place for a number of years. And what it does, it, the state helps those that qualify pay their property taxes. And then in turn, what happens is they place a lien against the property, so at the time that the individual passes or the home is sold, the state is paid back with a small amount of interest. In 2009, the governor at the time did away with the program. And what we're seeing across the state as tax collectors, because that was almost five years ago, I'm not seeing it in our county, which is, which is good, but in a lot of counties, because it's been five years, those properties are now, those individuals have not been able to pay their property taxes, so they're subject to tax sale. And so in an effort to help these individuals, we're trying to get this program reinstated. We do have the support of Assemblyperson Rich Gordon to sponsor this bill. And it's currently sitting in the Assembly Appropriations Committee because it has to be heard with other bills that might cost the state some money. So the association is, there's a lot of support, if you have a board, you know, all the different counties, Board of Supervisors, if they can write a letter of support for this, we think it'll help move it along. So that's why I'm here this morning.
Move to approve?
Second.
And seconded. Public comment? Okay, again, this is for senior and disabled. It's more of a loan that's paid back through a lien on the property rather than having the property foreclosed on, these seniors and disabled being evicted.
Exactly.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Rich is a great guy. Rich Gordon's a good guy.
Great. Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you for bringing it forward. While we're still talking about legislation and such, I'm going to bring back what we added regarding the fishing game vote to list the gray wolf as a threatening endangered species. Can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, to clarify, the motion for the public?
I guess this localizes the issue.
No, that's not what it is.
What? No, the, I actually request to be put on the agenda. The item was brought up in February before the California Fish and Wildlife Commission and was to, there's an attempt to list the gray wolf because he's traveled back into California as an endangered species. The Director of Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife recommended against it, but the commission extended it for 90 days, and we're at the end of that time period. So that's, that's, and we've had a request by the Del Norte Farm Bureau to send a letter opposing it.
Okay. So that's the motion and the second. Any public comment? Back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. There is another item, number 28, which is discuss a letter of support from Rendan's Bill, AB 2205, as requested by the CAO. Jay?
This was actually brought forward by Supervisor Hemmingson. It has to deal with the use of hounds to hunt bears and bobcats within the county's jurisdiction. This would leave the decision with the ability to do that with the local jurisdiction and with information to be provided by the state.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send a letter of support for AB 2205, which is the localization issue. And public comment? Back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. And with that, we're going to go to item number 26, which is to discuss and hopefully approve sending a letter to Six Rivers National Forest Superintendent requesting a 30-day extension to the draft DIR. Randy, you want to take the lead on that?
Sure, I can just
Or do you want to defer to height?
I was sitting closer, so I guess I'll stand. As you're all aware, the NOA was published for the draft environmental impact statement for the travel management plan for the Six Rivers National Recreation Area. It's a significant document, obviously. It has significant ramifications for access concerns as well as environmental protection concerns for those areas within the Six Rivers National Recreation Area. Being that it is such a significant document, being that it's so complicated, technically oriented, as well as the significant issues that have been identified already, the recommendation from staff at this point is to go ahead, request those additional 30 days to kind of process it. And then at that point, hopefully, we'd be able to submit a letter to the Forest Supervisor's Office that reflects the concerns of the entire county.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded under discussion. Supervisor McQuar?
Randy, how often do they do that? I mean, is it, is it a good shot that we'll get a 30 days or?
It really depends on the Forest Supervisor's disposition. Under NIPA, they have a certain amount of discretion to provide those increments of 30 days, 60 day extensions. In this case, we were conservative by asking for 30 days. We could have asked for more, so we hope are receptive to that, but it's ultimately up to the Forest Supervisor and again, their disposition.
Thank you. I would request that we also ask Chesbrough and Art and even Huffman to weigh in and identify that because we are such a small county to be able to respond on such a complex report in such a short period of time, we need the additional time. And then ask them to, to help us, to ask them to write a letter identifying our need for an extension.
As we usually do with those letters, let's include the CCs?
Yeah.
Okay. My question is, you got five now out of the six different alternatives. They're recommending a specific one. When you come back to the board, do you anticipate making a recommendation or, and/or a hybrid of some that we can espouse to?
Yeah, sure. It would likely be a hybrid at this point, based on the outreach that we've had with the public on alternative six. It seems like that's as close to a middle ground as has been presented. That's also the preferred alternative for the Forest Service, so we'll probably make recommendations based on concerns relating to search and rescue, access to cultural areas, you know, prioritize some of the routes that maybe weren't included or some corrections, and kind of try and incorporate that into six. Although, you know, as we said, it is a technical document, and we're still kind of waiting through it, but at this point, it looks like six is probably going to be what we're going to go with.
All right, so just to be clear, what we're asking for is a 30-day extension. Members of the public wish to comment on this? Any other staff input? Dean?
Like I said, the length of this report is extensive, and to be able to digest it and to meet with the, those stakeholders that we have been meeting with in order to address those concerns, we have our search and rescue personnel as well as others looking at the report, and we already have identified several areas where there are concerns about us being especially able to access the North Fork area if they remove, as they're planning to, several of the roads that allow us access to several miles of that, of the North Fork, where we constantly have rescue operations fairly common, especially during the year, seasons for kayaking. So that is an area of concern for us with the current proposal of six, which was what we're looking at because that is their desired proposal. Also, within the document itself, there are several statements that were basically in error because they indicated that our meetings that we did have were, were those of coordination, in which case, you know, those that were in attendance can testify to the fact that coordination was the least thing being, happening at those, at those meetings, even though they were in attendance. At no point was, was there really an effort to coordinate or bring together the plans of the county with the plans of the Six Rivers National Forest. So for that, we're going to continue, and I support the 30-day extension, and we will contribute our comments to the report as it goes forward. Thank you.
Excellent. I was going to ask you to please, going forward, Dean, any comments, work with the community development, and get those incorporated. Jerry?
I do have some concern that we may not, that 30 days may not be enough. It is a lengthy document, so I don't know if there's a way that we can request more time, but also give them the option of only giving us 30 days? Yes, 60 would be preferable, 30 would be acceptable.
You all got a copy of the letter, and you see the way that it's written, based on our recommendation. If you're, if you would make a suggestion to include the incorporation of options, maybe 30-day scenario, a 60-day scenario, and say that our, you know, we would prefer to have as long, as much time as possible, but given the constraints, it's already been published in the federal registry. We understand why you may go with 30 days, but just provide that as maybe an opportunity to kind of choose between the 30 or 60 in the letter. We could, we could make those changes in the draft letter.
Okay. Good. Can I get an amendment to the motion to reflect that?
Yeah.
So amended. My second.
And seconded. Good.
Also, in regards to the letter, I think we need to know who it's going to. I understand it might be confusing, but I'm afraid that to whom it may concern might be able to be round filed relatively quickly.
Sure, so maybe we should specify to the Forest Supervisor?
Yep. And I would send it registered.
Yep.
Okay. Any further public comment?
You know, and I do have one other question. You're, you're going to send this
Randy, you might as well stay up here until we get to voting, so.
You're going to
No, Randy, Randy knows I'm trying to end the discussion because we're going to have a lengthy one when you bring the stuff back.
So, so my understanding is that we don't, we don't have a Forest Supervisor, we have an interim Forest Supervisor.
Right.
So do, maybe we need to kick that up, up to Randy more, also the regional, regional forester.
Yeah, and that was part of the reason why we said to whom it may concern, just because there is some, some turnover there right now.
Right. Okay.
Randy, a quick question. You know, who are we, who are we going to be meeting with the next time you meet with the Forest Service? Do you have any names at this point, or do you have anyone with authority, or are they referred back to Eureka?
At this point, all we've been given is this document to provide comment on. We've not been invited to participate in any meetings that I'm aware of. I believe they were engaged with the locals at the Grange last week, but again, as staff, we've not been invited to participate. We actually have a question posed to County Council right now regarding coordination with the Forest Service, and that's probably the best answer I can give you at this point.
And I would also, once again, ask you to please use that letter of acknowledging that was done between CSAC, RCRC, and the Forest Service to insist that they engage us early and often.
And if you look at the document, you know, they do make passing mention to the process of coordination that they say took place through those two-by-twos. The question of, you know, sufficiency or adequacy of that coordination, I think, is basically going to be the question for County Council that we've, we've put forward.
Right.
And yeah, there needs to be, obviously, on a document like this, a lot of
Has it been established who our point person is? Is it you in communications between the Forest Service or Heidi?
Probably Heidi, I would imagine.
Okay, but then specify that because that was one of the stipulations, so they can't say, oh yeah, we talk to you two by two.
Right.
That's all well and good, but that is not the designated communication process.
Yeah, and if you have someone specific you'd like to designate, this would probably be the time to do it.
Heidi? Yes, sure. Community development. Yes. Good.
Call the question, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And last but not least, is consider any miscellaneous legislative or budget matters pertinent to the County of Del Norte authorized the chair to sign or send appropriate letters. Jay, do you have something?
Nothing additional than what we've already talked about. I do have a few notes in here regarding legislation. Obviously, I touched on the pilt already because of our ability to be in contact with our advocates 24/7. We got that before it was over. Pelican Bay 4750, we are also in touch with our advocates about prompt payment from the state. That has to do with payments related to services through Pelican Bay, and they're several months behind, and we want to make sure that they also budget in the next year for a sufficient amount so they don't fall behind. HR 4272, which is Forest Access and Rural Communities Act, which is the federal level, which requires that the U.S. Forest Serv which requires that the U.S. Forest Service take into account any county input on impacts of travel management rules prior to U.S. Forest Service action. And then SB 1270, which is legislation that deals with the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. Randy has been the point on that, but that legislation would take away some of the involvement of the community development department while doing inspections on the county mine. And what it essentially would do is put the state in, in the responsible.
Didn't we take action to send a letter on that?
We have taken it. Now, it's still going through and right now, they're, they're going forward with the original action, which would be to not allow any of the county staff to do the inspection, which will no doubt increase the cost to the state and to the local and to the mine operator. So we're still arguing about that one, but so far fallen on deaf ears.
Okay, duly noted.
Anything else? Jerry?
I'm sure we're going to come back with a whole slew of them after we hit ledge conference.
Yeah, there was another bill, 40, 4272 or something?
That was the, HR 4272 is the one I talked about, Forest Access and Rural Communities, yes. Our advocate is on top of that one too and obviously it's, follows along with our ledge platform, so he knows where we stand.
If that's all, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.